Don't say it's open in yet.
It's not very good when the email subject is correct.
Alright guys, we got nine o'clock. Let's stand for the pledge. Diane's gonna lead us. Thank you.
Danny David. Roger Mayhew.
Here.
Charles Wiltzy.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I'm gonna change, look at it.
I think it's my page.
Any additions or corrections?
I'd like to pull off the agenda B resolution to approve the agreement with extension services.
Like to pull it?
Uh yeah, please.
Is there a rationale behind it?
I think we need to have more talk about it. I'd like to talk more about it on our commissioner whole meeting next week.
This is for the MSU?
Correct.
Extension Services? We need a motion to put that?
You're pulling it off the agenda entirely?
I mean, I'm fine with some discussion, but I would like to not vote on it today if we could.
Actually, if um you just, well, you haven't voted on the agenda yet. So when you vote on the agenda and that's excluded, then it's it's taken care of.
That is a three percent increase in it, I think that one.
Okay. We're gonna pull that for now. There was no deadline on that fact. There's not a deadline.
It starts fiscal year, you know, so you've got.
Okay, so we have time.
Yep.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections?
Is this thing? What's D all about?
Resolution to accept a quote for web-based time and attendance system migration? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Um, that was the Nova time, correct?
Yeah.
That was the time uh seven E is uh.
Yeah.
Except a quote for technology to provide Nova time automated employee time. Also two time clocks that are needed?
Oh, I remember. Okay, okay. I remember, yeah.
Any other additions or corrections?
Move to approve the agenda with uh. Subtract from, I guess, not addition.
We have a motion room Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item three, declaration of conflict of interest. Are there any commissioners that have any potential conflict at this time?
I do not.
Item four, review of minutes. Sir, August thirty first, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
Uh.
For September seventh.
August thirty first, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept them.
Motion room Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Is there any discussion on those?
I don't have them in front of here, but I think there's just, oh, right here. No, this isn't it.
August thirty first.
Uh, this is an agenda.
You want the agenda? You want the minutes?
Is this the minutes?
That's the minutes.
Uh, it was just uh, just a small thing.
Go ahead.
Uh, oh, down at the bottom of the first page where it said that at the next regular committee of the whole on September fourteenth. It's not a committee of the whole today. It's a regular board meeting today. That's all. It's just miscored, that's all.
Any other additions or corrections? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four B, September fifth, twenty twenty-three. It says two thousand and three, twenty twenty-three Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Make a motion, we pass the minutes.
Motion room Commissioner Scott.
I'll second that.
Support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'll vote. Item C, September seventh, twenty twenty-three Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion with best of minutes.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll sign.
I have a question.
Um, yes. Uh, support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
On the back, the top thing, it says Craig Scott County Commissioner forming a budget committee. William Engelman, MITC Lead Attorney. What's, what was that all about?
He made the comment or suggested that we form a budget committee when he was talking.
Public comment. The first page, first page says public comment.
Basically.
Everybody's what they said.
Okay, got it.
Basically a recommendation.
Okay. Alright.
Any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, comment on agenda items only. Any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone on agenda items only? Item six, we received correspondence from the Sabo Valley Community Mental Health Authority related to the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three board meeting minutes. A notice from the Sabo Valley, uh, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three for the public meeting and public hearing. Correspondence from northeast, northeast Michigan Community Service Agency related to the August fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes in Tuscola County. Related to the opposition to Michigan sanitary code amendment. Those have been received and filed. Item seven, consent agenda. I, I, I would like to take those individually, just to make sure we're.
That's.
All of your understanding. Item seven A, resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four fee schedule. This resolution is sponsored by Planning and Zoning Administrator Ryan Veder. On June eighth, twenty twenty-three, the Regular Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-three dash eight-six to authorize necessary charges incident to or arising from the execution of the board's lawful authority. The Planning and Zoning Administrator seeks to amend the fee schedule to offset costs associated with various planning and zoning functions. Approval of the resolution will allow for implementation of the new fee structure beginning October first, twenty twenty-three. Can we entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to take this resolution as stated, supported.
Motion from Commissioner Wiltzy, support from Commissioner Scott, discussion on that? Ryan, did you have anything to add to that? Seeing you back there. I think we covered this in Committee of the Whole. There's a few increases, some stay the same. Any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Danny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item seven C, resolution to authorize a grant agreement with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission and the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. This res- yeah, let me just discuss this because there's money involved. This resolution is sponsored by the Administrator slash Controller Timothy Dalahoney, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission and the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. Approved Ogma County's compliance plan and cost analysis to provide indigent defense and related services at the thirty-fourth Judicial Circuit Court and the eighty-second Judicial District Court, thereby affirming the county's eligibility to receive a grant funding for indigent defense. The purpose of this grant is to provide funding to assist Ogma County with implementation of the compliance plan and cost analysis approved by the MIDC for the provision and indigent criminal defense services through the minimum standards approved by LARA. And the process described in the MIDC Act. Who of this resolution will document formal acceptance of the eight hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty, forty-one cents grant and commit the county to a matching contribution of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven dollars and one cent for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to pass the resolution.
The motion from Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons in your discussion. Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seventy, resolution to accept a quote for web-based time and attendance system migration. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Dalahoney. On October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Ogma County Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-one dash one-two-eight to accept a quote from Andrews Technology to provide the Nova Time Automated Employee Time and Attendance Software Package. In March twenty twenty-two, the ultimate, ultimate Kronos Group acquired the Nova Time System and provided a five-year window of support for the Nova Time System. Approval of the resolution will authorize Andrews, Andrews Technology to convert the Nova Time System to the UKG system and will authorize purchases of two new time clocks at a total cost of four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Make a motion to pass the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion room Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Item seven E, resolution to amend the Ogma County purchasing procedures policy. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. On October twenty-second, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty dash four-nine, adopt a purchasing proceed- Procedures policy to define purchasing policies, bidding policies and proceed- Procedures that apply to the purchase of all types of goods, materials, supplies, works and services required by the county. The Board sought to amend section eighteen dot A of the policy to promote transparency in bid opening. Approval of the resolution will require that all sealed quotes and proposals be opened at a public meeting of the appointed board, commission on, commission or committee that issued the request or the Board of Commissioners. Any persons desiring to be present at the opening of the quotes slash proposals may attend.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
The motion of Commissioner Wiltzy, support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight, public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for citizens to provide input associated tending decisions of the Board of Commissioners regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Public comment about the proposed budget will be heard as required by the budget hearing of Local Government Act. Established rules for the public comment will apply. So they get the regular three minutes. So those rules are, I might as well read those so that we all. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. So we open this for.
This need a motion. Uh, the chair can declare the public hearing open.
Public hearing is open at nine thirteen. Anybody like to speak? In the room? Please? Anybody on the phone?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
No comments on the phone? We have somebody in the room that would like to speak? Make sure everybody can hear you clearly.
Karen Piglowski, your Ogma County Trotter. Good morning, everyone. I just want to reiterate what I stated last night about the preservation of being self-funded and how important that is for the savings of Ogma County. To avoid the burden of that bond agency fees and interest that would be charged on borrowing to pay the tax, like when you have goals.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We have a motion. Do we have support to close the public hearing? Public meeting is closed. At nine fourteen. Item nine, new business. Diane Pelz, Sabo Valley Community Mental Health Authority CEO, related to Sabo Valley Community Mental Health Annual Update. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Um, I know you receive these documents electronically. I also have them in a folder for you. Could I?
Please.
Thank you very much. I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like one?
Well, good morning and thank you. It's hard to believe it's been a year already since I've, I was here last to talk to you about what's been going on with the Sabo Valley. Um, as you know, um, I, I am here annually to, first of all, thank you for your support towards community mental health. Um, not only from a financial perspective, but just also from being a good community partner and supporting us in what we do. Um, so we are here not only to ask for appropriations for next year, which have stayed the same since nineteen ninety-eight based on our authority um, status, um, but also just to give you a brief update of what has been happening. Um, in your folder, like I said, you did receive this electronically. I'm assuming it was passed on, but you have my letter. You have a proposed budget for next year, um, and that is just a proposed draft. The actuaries from the state of Michigan who are, is Milliman, they have not released um, the new rates at all for us, so we do not have that um, in hard copy yet. So we are going on basically a confirmation budget. Um, and then there's also the breakdown of the public counties that we work with, with great companies, what their uh, contribution is. Um, again, which has remained the same um, for many, many years. Um, first, I would like to thank the board um, for appointing Ms. Simmons to our Board of Directors. We are pleased to welcome her to our board and the court to working with her. And so, um, thank you again for that. We are now um, fully, fully complete as a Board of Directors. Um, just to, oh, let me back up also. You have um, our annual report in your folder. It is actually a new format for us. It's the new year of our new format. Um, we're really pleased at how it turned out. We hope you are too. And if you have any questions on that, please let me know. Um, I'm going to do something a little bit different this year. Usually I go into more, data more in depth. Um, I think the report gives that to you. I really want to talk about some initiatives that are um, starting that I think are really important, especially as um, you know, we've talked about the national workforce shortage. We talk about um, fiscal shortages, the need to do more with less. Um, the very apparent increase in the needs of people with, with mental health um, crises and um, taking care of not only their physical health, but their behavioral health. Um, you know, it's, it's time where we really have to make a strong effort towards collaboration um, towards that collective impact that we can all have together when we work together. Um, and um, it, it's on average since the pandemic, pandemic, our agency has been doing over a hundred more crisis calls a month than we, than we ever had. Um, that's adults and children, and that doesn't mean that they're all urgent or emergent, but there's a lot of people that are in need of care. Um, and we know that it's not just a Sabo Valley that handles um, these crises, but it also comes across from law enforcement perspective, nine-one-one EMS hospitals. Um, it's, it's very difficult to get placement, um, so we have to be creative in how we try and help our communities. Um, and in that respect, you know, we have been looking at what more can we do? Um, and as we went through our strategic plan, we did add a new goal. Um, and that's what I want to talk about. And the goal is written as community immersion and collaboration towards enhancement of crisis and emergency services. Provision of outpatient therapy and other clinical services and assistance to community partners, the expansion of secondary trauma initiatives. So the first one is we want to improve community relations and this um, this isn't, this actually I have to compliment um, Lieutenant Short from the Michigan State Police who actually started um, holding meetings of um, people in our communities that need to be at the table to talk about this. So it's, it's, you know, all levels of law enforcement, um, Michigan State Police, you've got the county, you've got city, um.
EMS, nine-one-one.
Hospital staff, um, first responders. I mean, we all met and it was very clear that we didn't understand what each other's constraints were. So we talked about our codes. We talked about our regulations. We talked about how we are bound by the mental health code and the administrative rules. Um, but we also talked about what can we do better? How can we help our communities better? Um, and out of that actually came a better sense of awareness. Um, in this county, we are actually starting a pilot where we are going to work with um, your EMS, uh, nine-one-one director, Jesse Mole. And we are going to co-locate one of our emergency services staff in your nine-one-one center. So when a call comes in, um, they will be right there to help ascertain whether this is something that really needs to go to the staff or can we intervene and talk to the person, see what they need, maybe get them a lower level of care. Maybe not take, have to take them through the whole traumatic process um, of, you know, from start to finish, because it is quite traumatic. So we can maybe intervene, um, get them into our offices sooner. Um, another benefit to this is that our staff will have, you know, our equipment, they're able to get into our electronic health record to see if the person is a current consumer. Um, you know, maybe they are on medications, maybe we can contact the case manager and, and immediately get that care for them without drawing on other resources of ambulance or law enforcement or the emergency department. Um, which is a good for anybody. So we're hoping um, that that is going to be a very positive um, outcome and pilot. Um, talking with Isko County for the same thing. And actually, their systems, uh, Isko County, Ogma County and Arnet County, and I think there's one other county in there, um, are all connected somehow when it comes to nine-one-one. And I know I'm not going to explain this correctly because we just had this conversation on Monday. But even if, um, I ask County, who is also in our catchment, has a similar call, they can transfer that call to the nine-one-one here. Um, and our staff can help with it as well. So we are, we are very hopeful that this is going to be um, have a very positive impact on our communities and on our people. Um, and, and you know, even the bottom line of um, finances and, and workforce. So we're looking forward to that. Um, we are also looking at, um, how can we reduce stigma in our communities? We've come a long way, but there's still a long way to go. Um, and sometimes just coming to a mental health building or building that is solely mental health um, can be stigmatizing. And so we are looking at moving out more into our communities. So here in Ogma County, um, we are partnering with MyMichigan to um, co-locate a therapist in their new rural health center down um, here. Um, because, you know, it's one building. There's physical health on one side. There's behavioral health on the other side, but everybody comes in the same door and there's a lot going on behind that door. Um, and it's not entitled community mental health. So we're looking at doing that. We're looking at partnering also with the Sterling Area Health Center, which is the federally qualified health center in the area. Um, to also put a therapist and or case managers um, in their Ogma Clinic, which is in Skidway Lake and their um, Hale Clinic. Um, we actually serve a lot of families from those two areas. So we're hoping that being there will help, you know, alleviate the burden of transportation and some other barriers that, that um, families experience. And um, again, lessen, lessen the stigma because that is um, that is very important. And then um, lastly, we want to make sure that people in our areas, businesses, whoever it may be, knows that we have resources to help with secondary trauma. Um, secondary trauma is the trauma that a person um, that happens to a person who is hearing about or with a person who has actually experienced the trauma. So they're, they're um, they're getting the trauma secondarily, but they're still affected by it. Um, and there's actually a lot more of that than we realize, um, since the, not only since the pandemic, but um, you, you know, with few years ago, we had um, numerous completed suicides in, in our, in our youth. Um, from how I understand, the one uh, driver from nine-one-one, he was the same, you know, man that went out on all of those calls. There's no doubt that he experienced some secondary trauma. I mean, we all handle things our own way and, which is fine. Um, but we have an actual team, a critical incident stress management team um, that is comprised of numerous community members. It's not just community mental health, but there's um, law enforcement. There's people from the school, the HHS, um, community members that will come around and help people process. Um, as a matter of fact, we are coming to Ogma County here in October at the request of the prosecutor to do secondary um, trauma um, training with, I don't know if it's just her staff or if that's going to be opened up or not, but it's just, it's very, very important. Um, that, that is getting out there. We're actually going to start, um, sending out our training calendars to all of the county commissions so that you know what we have. Those are open to the public. Everybody's welcome to attend. We have numerous trainings on mental health, first aid, youth mental health, first aid, veterans, first aid, farmers, first aid. I mean, there's just, there's so many levels of mental health first aid, just depending on what the needs are. So um, extremely important that we want to make sure that our communities know that we are here for them. It's not just coming to the buildings. It's us coming to you. We are there to come to you. Um, we are not fully staffed by any means. I don't, I don't know if I can think of anybody that is fully staffed at this time, but you know, we will make sure that we are where we need to be, when we need to be there to help our communities, because that is definitely our mission. We want to, uh, we want to be there. Um, the last thing I really want to draw your attention to is, um, last year, when I came, we had talked about Carter kits, which was the, the censoring kit for um, that started out with first responders. Just a quick update on that. We have actually trained and gifted over two hundred and fifty of those kits already. Um, which has been amazing. Um, we have trained your transit drivers. We've been in the schools. We've been in ISD. We've been in the libraries, EMS. So there's a lot of these um, these uh, these kits out there for when, you know, there's the need and we have more. So if there's still an extension of need, um, you know, we are here to provide that training and those kits as well. So quickly, I just want to close and just say, you know, it, it really is my vision or the hope that our collaborative efforts will continue. Um, and you know, that we all recognize that we have to work together because a lot of the people that we see, whether it's nine-one-one, community mental health, or enforcement, um, hospitals, it's a, you know, those people cross all of our paths at one time or another. Um, and you know, we want to make sure that we are compassionate to their needs. Everybody deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. And I think if we collaborate, if we, we try pilot programs, the thing I love about pilot programs is that um, you know, the, the, the barriers can be a little bit softer. Um, things that you would normally have to adhere to when you're just following evidence-based practice um, are very stringent. But when you, when you do a pilot, you can be creative and let's see what we can do to work together. We will collect data. Um, usually our pilots, we like them to be at least four months, sometimes six, but every thirty days we will try and collect data. See what's going on, see who we've helped, what resources we have um, saved. And you know, I, I believe fully that in the long run, this is, will definitely be a win-win situation. Um, so again, I want to thank you all for your time, for your support. Um, if there's any, or anytime something comes up, please feel free to give me a call. You have my card. Um, and open to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions for us?
Appreciate what you do. Thank you. Appreciate what all you guys do. We know mental health is sadly something that just seems to be becoming more and more of a problem. So do we have actual face workers full-time like in our schools right now for our, our younger children that are experiencing signs of mental health issues?
Um, well, the um, the state of Michigan had a grant which was called the thirty-one end funds. And those were to put mental health practitioners in the schools. So most of the schools do have um, mental health counselors. Uh, they are not um, they are not aligned with community mental health. And when I say that, that means it's not like we have a contract with them or we don't share staff with them. Um, but they do have practitioners there. Um, we, we are also supporting the Sterling Area Health Center in their quest for school-based health centers. Um, they are putting a school-based health center um, in, in Hale and in Woodmore Prescott in our catchment. And then I know Standish-Pinkhining and, and Augrey Sims. Um, so we are supporting them. Um, so we are supporting them in that with their behavioral health needs. They will actually have a dedicated behavioral health therapist in the schools that are having these health centers um, to help the children there. Um, whenever there is a crisis or a need, we do have a dedicated emergency services team. Um, that that is all they do. This is something new for our agency that actually just came to fruition this spring. In the past, um, anybody who was who had a clinical degree and bachelor's degree or masters had to be assigned to our emergency services roster. I mean, everybody had to take a turn. Well, we found that um, that was actually a very large detriment for longevity. Um, for those staff and some people are good with doing um, emergency services and crisis calls or I I shouldn't say that. I think they're all good. I think it's it's more of a niche for some and and they that's their preference as opposed to others. So when people would leave, when we do would do exit interviews, that was like the number one reason why people were leaving because they did not feel comfortable in doing emergency services. Um, so we changed that. We did a pilot, proved successful. We now have this dedicated team. Um, and they go wherever they need to go to help assess crises, whether it's in the schools, at the home, um, in the community, at the hospital, wherever it is. Um, we are looking at trying to do um, more with the schools and to see how we can partner with them. Um, a lot of it sometimes really is based on on lack of staffing and lack of resources. It's not that we don't want to, sometimes we just, we just can't, you know, what's going on right now. Uh, but that is definitely on the horizon and and we want to do as much as we can. We have had caseworkers um, go in the school and be in the school. Um, and that was back when we had a big prevention program. Um, that actually happened when the state cut the general funds. We would like to be back in the schools.
So. Just one more thing. So I I have heard some of the buzz about the Woodmore Prescott. There's no current actions or talks going on with Ogmao, oh, right?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but this is an initiative right through the Sterling area health center. So um, that question would have to be addressed to them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Item B, resolution to accept USDA grant funds for vehicle purchase. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. The United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development Program provides affordable funding to develop essential community facilities in rural areas. Program funds can be used to purchase equipment such as police vehicles and pay-related project expense. On March second, twenty twenty three, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty three dash thirty to authorize application for USDA rural development grant funds for the purchase of two vehicles. On September sixth, twenty twenty three, the USDA approved Ogmao County's requests for community facilities program grants to partially fund the purchase of a detective vehicle and a patrol vehicle. Approval of the resolution will formally accept grant funds for purchase of a detective vehicle at a cost of sixty seven thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars. Thirty seven thousand, two hundred USDA grant, thirty thousand, four hundred and forty five county contribution and a patrol vehicle at a cost of sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars. With thirty seven thousand, nine hundred from the USDA grant and thirty one thousand, fifty two dollars from the county contribution. Anybody like to entertain this motion?
I'd like to have some conversation.
Would anybody like, so would you like to entertain this motion?
Yeah, I'll entertain the motion.
We have a motion with Commissioner Wiltsey. Any support?
No support.
Support from Christopher Scott. Under Sheriff, would you like to speak? I see you walking this way.
Well, I figure I'd come be a part of the conversation.
Please.
Um, I understand that, you know, first and foremost, we all know what the monster in the room is. Try to address it. We do have an opportunity with the USDA grants uh, to continue our fleet maintenance, which is our day-to-day operation, try to upkeep upkeep our fleet. Um, if you remember some of the conversations, the the CIP, the capital improvement plans, we set up a rotation of two, three and two. This fiscal year would be a two vehicle purchase for the capital improvements program. Basically, looking at it real closely, um, you had one patrol car and the USDA grant the detective car. In essence, you'll have two patrol cars that will end up being in the fleet that'll go out on the road for services and um, maintaining the fleet, providing services to our community. The half. I guess for point of conversation, again, I understand that we don't want to spend any money that we don't, but the money we do spend, we only get the most paid for our buck. The three cars that were on the table in twenty five, those are even further not being considered at this point because of what we have to accomplish. What we're presented with right now is this opportunity with USDA, basically to pay fifty five percent of the two cars. Um. We can move one of the two cars, the patrol car, and Tim, I'll kind of refer to you to the village money. With minimal effect on what the budget is is always laid out currently, can absorb it without having to make too many changes. So that one of the two grants would be under the village, and that is the patrol car. That's the one that we would do. So the next one then would be, what do we do with the detective car? Contacted Kelly, um. Originally, we were gonna, uh, our plan was to sell more vehicles in twenty five than next year, offset the purchase of three vehicles. Obviously, that's kind of out the window with what the monster that we're facing. So the sheriff has reevaluated our fleet plan. We could sell two of the Ford vehicles, the oldest ones there being used, one is a posse. The second one is um, the sheriff's vehicle, which experienced mechanical problems. Kelly was able to quickly, within five minutes, give me a price. If we put that on the auction block between the two, we get nineteen thousand. For those. So one will be listed starting at ten, the second one at nine thousand. So we'd be starting there. The other caveat to that, we all know that I'm waiting on the titles for two jet skis. As soon as we get those titles, we're gonna sell them. We're in the conversation with Deputy Better. We're looking at about eight thousand dollars. So we use rough numbers like last night when I was thinking about it was sixty four. It's more than sixty four. When we split that thirty two and thirty two, thirty two into the general fund, you're down to five thousand dollars that we're trying to make up the difference depending on the sale price of the two vehicles that we sell through auction and the jet skis. So that's for the consideration and discussion. Where you want to take it from there. Obviously, I understand we've got a lot of big mountain that we've got to climb, but yeah, shame on me if I don't continue to also manage the day-by-day operations of the fleet. So. That's, again, rough numbers. I'm not, there's at the numbers that are a little bit higher. I was saying, I think so a thousand, two thousand dollars. It's not sixty four, it's sixty seven, but.
Appreciate your input, Under Sheriff. Any questions for the Under Sheriff, Commissioners?
So.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So total cost of us would be like five thousand dollars for two cars?
In that ballpark, if you use the rough numbers, if we get the nineteen thousand for the two Fords that we sell and the eight thousand for the two jet skis.
And the road patrol, the village would pay it.
Well, we could do that too, but then I would ask that the money that we get from the sale of those, we go back into the village so that we can offset the cost of absorbing in the village. So you can move the whole county portion to the village. Then when I could rework the village road budget. But then I would just ask them, any sale proceeds as opposed to going to the mountain? We go back into the village so that we could get down this current fiscal year and provide the services that are budgeted for.
Okay, what about the lettering and all the equipment that has to go into that patrol car? Who's going to pay for that?
It's all part of the grant. That's all part of the proposal, that final price.
So we paid none of that.
They pay forty five percent of it, which would come out of the village or we could split it what the discussion was.
I don't want to split nothing. We don't have any money.
I I understand what you're saying. We could not sell anything. All I'm saying is we're going to spend money and we are going to spend money to keep operating. Maybe if I could come up here and and talk to you at least, take advantage of the money that we are spending. And in this case, if we want to move it all into the village, I just ask that the money that we get back in the sale of the vehicles go back into the village. So that we can continue to provide the services until the vote next year.
Question, Paul.
Go ahead.
So these additional costs like to get the cars outfitted for everything we need, that's not even what we're, that's not even on dollar amounts we're talking right now. That's above and beyond.
That is a part of the grant. The grant is set up for the purchase of the vehicle and equipment. So the total cost that's in there is for getting those out of the road. The only additional cost would be because the plan is the second patrol car going to the road is the current detective ride, which is, I say ride, this is vehicle, it's a charger that he's currently driving. The plan would be that's going to be the second one to go to the road fleet. Striping and lights on the interior, like a flat top type of scenario. So there, the only additional cost that would come that we would have to look at would be for that striding. Because I do not believe that that's built into the detective car purchase. The USDA grant for the detective car that's being purchased is a regular car. It's not a patrol package. It's outfitted, similar to the civilian car will be used for detective purposes. The car that he's currently driven, which was part of the long-range planning, can be moved into the fleet as a patrol car. For a little additional cost that will pull out of equipment line out of the village will put striping in the interior lights. It already has some lighting and just add some something more in the interior when you get through patrol cars this cycle.
Any other questions, Commissioner Wiltsey?
I know.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, um, I would ask the board what they thought about using ARPA funds to pay for this because I'd rather think to sixty five thousand. And might have to use it for manpower in the next year. That's almost the cost of an officer, of an entry-level officer, getting pretty close to that. Um. It's either or, I mean, but that's, I'm I'm more concerned about having an officer rather than another car. If I had to draw a line.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't want to use any ARPA money for it.
Yes.
Personal opinion, I don't want to do that.
Mr. Mayhew? Oh, I'm sorry.
Use our ARPA money so far to patch a lot of holes. Especially for a couple of years now, we're in dire straits. No, I don't want to do that. Because ARPA money is going to be gone. There won't be any more ARPA money. Then what are we going to do? No.
Commissioner Mayhew?
You said that you can do it all except five thousand.
The, that's the rough estimate number. So we're talking about the offset.
Right.
Split the thirty two, thirty two.
If you got all the sales.
If we get the base price of the sales, yes.
If if you took them, five thousand, you could have two new cars.
Correct. The investment, the rough numbers. It's going to be a little bit higher than that because of the numbers I was working off sixty four. It's actually sixty seven on one of them. But the rough numbers comes five to seven thousand dollars in that range. After the sales, if we get the sales.
Right, but I mean, if if we did that and you guys didn't get your money, then you're going to come back to us.
No, that that still comes out of the village money, village money. We would just have to, I mean, if you put it all in the village money, we'd have to work with what the village budget has. So if we don't get as much money, then
It's all on you.
It's all in the village. You have to continue to stay within the village money. So I mean, as far as the the gamble, if you will. What I'm, what I'm proposing or it is a detective car, so technically that is a general fund three oh one sheriff's office, but it's also going to put a road patrol, so it can go into the village, in my opinion. If you put it all there and we take the gamble, we get the two cars, next year, talking three, we might have to revisit our CIP, obviously. Because of what we're trying to accomplish with the overall budget. But we have this opportunity right now. I just forsake of conversation, wanted to put this out there so we can make an informed decision if we are are going to spend money and we are going to spend. That we spend it wisely and take advantage of what we have in front of us as we continue to work on the model. Conversation.
Well, I I appreciate your input.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I appreciate your information that you provided to us. Um, I understand why why you're attempting to get this approved. Um, I mean, we've got a grant that's that's willing to pay for half of this. Um, I without, I without good conscience, unfortunately, cannot approve this. Um, as far as where we're at with our budget right now, as far as where we're at, we're talking about cutting jobs. Um, a year from now, I think if we're in better financial shape, I I know we had a timeline set up to replace these vehicles. Um. I just, right now, it's it's just the timing and where we're at financially. Uh, again, I appreciate the input, but uh, for me right now, I just don't think it's the the right time. Commissioner Wiltsey, did you have something else to add?
I mean, this decision has to be made now, right? I mean, we're like at the last moment, so.
Correct. That's that's the USDA deadline, yeah.
And you can kind of confirm what I'm saying, number wise. I mean, I know we don't know exactly what we can sell the vehicles for, but.
Right, but the the plan that the under sheriff presented with the sale of the two vehicles and the two jet skis, moving those proceeds then into the two fifty nine, the village fund, to do the offset definitely works and I would certainly be able to support that.
Any further discussion?
And the responsibility might be putting that Ford Explorer out. Also, right, the one got replaced out of the corrections? Remember with what the topple for corrections?
Oh, the Ford Explorer, yes. The Ford Explorer is still over there.
It's still over there, yeah.
So I mean, but some other fleet discussions could be had. Again, with before the mountain.
Right.
There was a replacement program and a lot of vehicle sales are going to occur in fiscal year twenty five to offset the three vehicles. I wouldn't know. And the plan was to kind of try to save those sales to offset that three, but of course.
Can we add, can we add the Explorer in the sales this year?
We can look at it. I mean, with their current fleet, we could take a look at.
Cause then we can come over.
Through a wire.
Anything else over there?
I do have a few, a few things for pennies, but again, that's more towards twenty five.
Do we have a ride sale?
Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
No.
Roger Mayhew?
No.
Charles Wiltsey?
No.
Under Simmons?
No.
Item C, resolution to accept award year twenty twenty three bus and bus facilities formula program grant. This resolution is sponsored by Transit Director Ray Blamer. The U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration provides competitive buses and bus facilities formula program grants administered by the Michigan Department of Transportation. MDOT requires an official statement from grant recipients to assure bus and bus facilities competitive program funds will be utilized in accordance with the adopted master agreement. Approval of the resolution will satisfy the MDOT requirements and formally accept the buses and bus facility formula program grant in the amount of three hundred and forty three thousand, two hundred and forty six dollars for purchase of two replacement buses. Mr. Blamer, come on up. Would you like to explain? Good morning. Would you like to explain? Thank you for coming.
Um, my name's Ray Blamer, I'm transit director. Um, we actually have five buses that are eligible for replacement. They're all two thousand fifteen's. Because of the increase in the price of these new buses, which the 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 price has doubled on these buses. Um, MDOT is not able to replace all these buses with with any of the transit agents. So of the five, they're replacing two with with this grant. And the SGP grant that was signed, I don't know, a month or so ago. That's replacing a third one, but there again, we're getting um, about two thirds of the amount to really purchase the bus, so. Um, in a nutshell, we're lucky to get these, I guess.
This is going to pay, this grant is going to pay for two buses in entirety, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the deadline is today for the
Definitely.
It's no cost to the county.
Deadline was yesterday. So we, I talked them into today and that's why I was so concerned with to make sure that you had it because it's a whole, all new system to us also, so. Time is of the essence.
I will sign today as soon as it's approved.
Great.
So no cost to the county?
No.
When will we be getting these buses?
When the grant comes back, then we will order, we're not even sure what bus company we want to order from. We can't get the original buses that we have been getting, the smooth bus company we want to order from. We can't get the original buses that we have been getting, the suicide that that's are just not building those anymore. So we may try a different bus manufacturer. I'm going to talk to Ross Common and maybe some other transes to see what, what kinds they have purchased. Um, it could take up to a year to get the buses. We, we don't know.
Okay.
You know, the last, the last, um, vehicle that we got was the van. That did take a year. That took a year from the time we ordered it till we took possession of it.
Questions for Mister Blamer, Commissioner Simmons?
And then you saw the old buses that they're replacing?
Yeah, we don't have.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, and we do have one. But we've been cannibalizing that one and the transmission is bad and it's, it's really not worth any money, so we're just.
Just save money so you didn't.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, while I'm up here, um, they, they did get the patient stuff done on the building. It looks really good. It's not bright red, but you know, you gotta give and take, but it looks pretty good. They don't have the bat doors in yet. Uh, Mister Burton, his business is wanting to come over and do that, but but, um, it's up and looks good. And also they have started on the, um, um, cutting the trees on the adjacent property for our barn, so things are progressing.
I think I made an error there. I did not. I would like to make the motion to accept this resolution to accept award year twenty twenty-three bus and bus facilities forming the program grant.
I'll make the motion, Steven.
But she just made.
Support. Now we're at discussion, I'm sorry. I, I jumped the gun there.
Not just.
Any? Any other discussion or, or, or questions for Ray?
I just want to say I drove out there yesterday. It looks great. I think we made a good choice on the color and
Yeah.
I just think this is a time now, we just got to keep this momentum going.
Yeah.
You know, we have a great opportunity to get this stuff done and we just got to, got to get these maintenance issues done.
Haven't heard a thing from um, Mister David, as far as our cement work. I did check, um, at the at the vendor that, that, um, built the last grading and don't want to talk to him about building anymore, but that's, that doesn't really, it's not relevant, but well, I, out of my curiosity, I stopped in there to see if anybody had ordered any, so I guess that's on hold for a while. The sign, um, I haven't heard from Rich. Rich has got a lot going on right now. He, he had a wreck. It's just, just a lot of things that really have, you know, kind of slowed him up, so. When is our meeting? Is it next week? I believe so, yes.
Excellent, Thursday.
Yeah, okay, so we'll discuss it then.
Any other questions related to this resolution? Roll call vote?
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wilsey?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Item ninety, Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Claim Number two one nine seven one three, closed question.
Chair, Chairman, too. I know it's not, it's just, it's the agenda right now. Could we just hold off on that till toward the end?
Yeah, you, are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
And we may have a vote after that.
Okay, so let's move that.
To announce that.
Let's move that after general public comment. Item claim, item nine E claims, um, claims of a total of a hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
I make a motion to approve the claims.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
I'll say, I'll support.
Motion for Commissioner Simmons, support from Commissioner Wilsey. I believe you two, uh, reviewed claims.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
We didn't see anything out of the ordinary. It's all the usual. As far as, um, um, childcare and family court, it's always um, large. So there was really nothing out of the, out of the ordinary, so I take a motion that, well, it's already made. I think we should just go ahead and prove it. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. Nothing.
No, we did the claims together. I agree.
Any other questions? Commissioner Scott?
No.
Mister Mayhew? Roll call vote?
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wilsey?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes. Item ten, unfinished business. Other, is there any commissioners? Item eleven, administrators report.
On Monday, we had our monthly department head meeting. We were able to go over that draft abuse prevention policy. You'll see that at the committee hall meeting next week. Um, this, um, had heightened urgency because our carrier was prepared to not cover abuse cases if we didn't have a policy in place, so I guess it certainly expedited this moving forward. Uh, I don't think you'll find anything in there that, um, you would object to. It's, it's pretty, um, it's, it's behavior that we would expect from our employees, uh, so there won't be any, you know, additional work really on anybody's behalf. Uh, so next week we'll see that. Uh, we also reviewed the health insurance rates for twenty twenty-four. You saw those a couple of meetings ago. Uh, so that's, uh, in front of the department heads now, so they've got that. And also, obviously, I talked about the fiscal year twenty-four budget situation and where all that stands. On Monday, the twenty-fifth, we're going to have our healthcare coalition get together, and this is a group of employees who are all under the Mesa Plan. So, uh, all, all of our unions who are involved are represented. Um, obviously, our payroll person will be there. Um, we're going to review the rates, but also look in the plan options, uh, which is the plan that they've rolled out that our employees, uh, might view as a very positive. We'd have to trade off one of the plans we have, but it might be worth the trade. We'll have a Mesa representative present to go over the finer details of it. But it's definitely one I think that's worthy of the group's attention.
What is that?
Pardon?
When, when is that person going to be here?
On the twenty-fifth, it's a Monday at noon.
September?
Yep. Uh, we also go over our experience rates for the past year, so we can kind of dissect, you know, what uh, benefits are being used and perhaps, uh, even mull the plan after what we see. We also, just this morning, got our open enrollment dates, uh, for the coming year, so from November fourteenth to December first, employees will be able to, uh, you know, change health plans, do whatever they need to do to enroll, uh, in the Mesa Plan for twenty twenty-four. Tonight, we have our second opioid committee meeting at five o'clock. Uh, we did receive, uh, this past week uh, forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents in settlement funds, so that's been, uh, placed into the opioid fund. And based on conversation at our last opioid meeting, I did reach out to our medical examiner, the Michigan Forensics Institute. Uh, the suggestion was that maybe our medical examiner would be willing to sit in on these meetings and participate. Uh, Doctor Miabar is agreed to do that, and he may actually be zooming in tonight. Uh, he was uh, unsure about his schedule, but moving forward, um, he definitely wanted, was actually pretty excited to participate. He is participating with some other counties as well, so I look forward to some decent input. Um, just a last item, just, uh, for the board, uh, to just talk about, I was, uh, talking to Tom this morning about meeting in this room and moving that A V equipment from place to place. Well, it's not a problem to move it. It's having, obviously, to disconnect cords and so on, and one of the primary cords that makes this thing run is getting freed. And he suggested if you were willing, that when we do our committee of the whole meeting, we actually do them at this end of the room as well. We would take a couple more tables and kind of close in the the circle here so that we have that same committee, the whole type, uh, setup, but then he doesn't have to move uh, that big cart back and forth.
I make a suggestion. Um, I, it feels to me like we're almost more in that committee of whole style right now. You know, before we were on one table, we got to look down around. I'm fine with this. If you guys are okay with this for committee whole, I mean, we can all look at each other, we're closer. I think you guys are hearing better. I'm fine with this setup for everything. If you guys are. I mean, I feel, this feels more, a lot more personal to me on the staff.
Pardon me?
It was save some time for the staff. To keep manipulating this furniture all the time. We stayed like this.
That's fine. Are you, are you guys, oh, you're okay? You're hearing okay?
Yep.
Okay.
No fans.
No, it's down there.
Is that it? Tim?
Yes.
I had a couple of things for you. Has there been any update on consumers where we're at with the county building?
Um, I, I think they're waiting on me now, uh, you know, as far as what next steps, what to focus on. And of course, my focus has been in a different direction for the last few weeks, but we'll, we can have to it.
Yeah, I had also, uh, that unemployment information. Can, can you, as far as make sure, try to make sure that that information is provided to us uh, before next Wednesday, as far as when that took effect, when we stopped paying the unemployment and when, uh, like if there was a resolution passed, if we can get a copy of that?
I can bring all that, sure.
And then also an updated list of that at will employees. Isn't there being an updated list? I haven't received that yet, neither.
Um, I understand that was sent, uh,
It was still.
That early in the week. Right.
I thought it says it's being updated. The last email I got from you, I thought it said it is being updated. I will send it later. I never received it. I can recheck again, but.
I think the one I sent you was the one that was updated.
Okay, can you resend that if that's the updated one?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like all that before Wednesday and then the unemployment information as well. Thank you. Anything, any other questions for Tim?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, I don't know this, but I, I wanted to know does the county get fifteen percent of the opioid money for administering it?
The way it works, um, the money is supposed to be spent in accordance with what we call appendix E, all the, you know, the project, you know, it's listed in there. Uh, and that's open to some interpretation back and forth. There is, um, statement in the settlement agreements that says we can spend up to fifteen percent on items that are not included on that list or not improved items. But we will also be compelled to follow some reporting criteria. And frankly, I don't really want to attract the attention of the attorney general if we can help it, and that will happen. We, we've been told this. Um, so the short answer is, well, can we keep fifteen percent of it? I would like to try to justify it in terms of what's in that appendixy, so if it was for some administrative function or something that we can trace and say, yes, we spent this much money on it, that, that would make me comfortable. But if we can't draw that clear line, that clear connection, um, and to say that, I would caution against doing that.
Okay.
I'd like to add to that.
Commissioner Simmons? Go ahead, you've spoken.
No, we had that fifteen percent. It really would help us. Um, it could be a prevention from us, maybe. I don't think we would, but drugs over this budget. Just a thought.
I was waiting for that. Can you prove that?
But I can start and then get some of the money and do it.
Okay, back to you, sir. Is that it, Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, we need.
We need to get some humor, so thank you, Commissioner Wilsey.
I mean, obviously, the, the opioid funding, you know, it's a great opportunity for us to really, you know, we've got a strong group of people here. I'm excited about tonight's meeting to kind of see where this goes. We had also, you know, you're spending time and energy, Kelly's spending time and energy, all of us are spending time and energy. And that's county functions. I mean, I do feel we should have some compensation for the county for that, that work. I think that's very, very easily justified.
I agree.
Any other? I, I I, I think we need real guidelines there before we do get in any trouble. Uh, it sounds great. I understand that, but, um.
But it could save, it could save this boy from going crazy.
I, again, I understand, but, um, there were some examples at our initial opiate, uh, meeting that she provided that did draw some attention. Uh, specifically was the, uh, body scanner that we talked about, so we, we want to be real cautious here. Even though it.
I agree.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh, Tim, where, where does the money come from? Who, who admin, who administers? Who, who's got it before that we get it?
It's actually coming through the state, but it's all, um, laid out in the settlement agreements with the pharmaceutical companies.
So is the attorney general's office or?
Uh, treasury? Actually, is, is coming through the attorney general. Um, you know, they're kind of like the lead agency for all of Michigan, for all municipalities.
Question, I suppose, to me, and.
All communications I've gotten from the state have been from the attorney general's office, which is unusual. Usually it comes from treasury, but they're not even involved.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Tim? Item twelve, elected officials and department head reports. Clerk?
Um, Brett Gildner, here, Ogumuck County Clerk. Uh, short update, just that I did send in my plan for the consolidation of the election to the state that was due last week. Um, all of the townships are on board. We now now I'm working on submitting the grant so that we can get everything fully funded. So that's where I'm at.
Anything else? Treasurer?
My, uh.
Quick, come on up, just so I make sure everybody can hear. So can all the department heads and office officials come up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sheriff, you're Ogumuck County Treasurer, again. The, uh, August summary cash report is on your iPads with the negative cash highlighted for you once again.
Thank you. Thank you. Randy, do you have anything?
Uh, Randy Booth, the equalization director, and, uh, just like, you know, we're working on our studies. We've been out doing, uh, like, we're just about done with our fieldwork for all of our ag studies, and we've got some commercial industrial we have to finish up and, uh, working on those cars when we get our studies in to the assessors and to the state. Uh, we had last year when we had our A M R reviews, three of the townships had failed. They had to have corrective action plans and, uh, this morning I got emails that the three of the townships had re-reviews. Uh, one of the townships is having a complete reappraisal. The state accepted their plan. And they got a letter, they're fully compliant now with state tax question, Department of Treasury. The other two, uh, had a few more things that they need to fix, but the state accepted is allowing them to do another corrective action plan. They're not going to seize their roles or do anything to them, so things are being taken care of and they should be in pretty good shape by next year.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Simmons, did you have a question?
Is that, uh, Horton, you're talking about?
Horton Township is having a reappraisal.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Randy?
I just, I just one thing. Uh, Randy, seems like you're really wise and intelligent regarding this, um, heavy rollback. And some that, you know, obviously that we're going to need to start having some conversations on and stuff, so. Um, if you have any information for us anytime, uh, moving forward with that, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise, come on up.
Denise Simmons, registered deeds. You had in your packet my reports showing for August. Um, you will note on there that total real estate sales for August was a little over seventeen million dollars. Since we have went to the Fiddler's Program and we do our tapestry, the Bastion and the Laredo, twenty twenty-two, that input seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars into the general fund. So far in twenty twenty-three, it's been a little over forty-three thousand dollars. The cost to do that in twenty twenty-two was forty-one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents, which is paid out of the automation fund, so the seventy-two thousand dollars was pure profit for the count. Monday and Tuesday of this week, we get two million dollars sales total, um, documents that were recorded. So property is still moving right now. It's big dollar property and none of it's being bought locally. So.
Any questions?
Questions?
Are the Chinese playing it?
No.
Just already asked.
Any other questions? For Denise, thank you for this information, Denise. Sheriff, come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
Brian Gilbert, Ogumuck County Sheriff. I just want to, I just want to publicly thank my staff. We're working as hard as they are, trying to, trying to wrap our heads around this budget. I'm sure my undersheriff is eating a lot of sleep at night. But, uh, I just want to personally thank them. Uh, we're working very hard to see what we can do. I did, I did send out a, a stat sheet of our correction facility, so. And that's all I have to say, but, um, we're working very hard over there.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
So you're having a, um, a conversation with, um, Michigan Department of Corrections tomorrow, right, are you?
Yes.
Unless it's parade that goes well.
Yeah, we'll see where that goes.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
None here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phil from MSU, did you have something you wanted to add? Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, I'm Fielders with MSU Extension. I'm not the director, I'm just sitting in. Uh, first of all, thank you so much for your support. Um, you know, we work in a variety means county. Uh, we have a new four H uh, program instructor. Have you met her, Stephanie?
No, she's like, yeah.
If I knew that, I would order in. Um, but we have a new four H program uh, director and I'm certainly glad for that. Looking forward to rebuilding our four H program. That's just a major importance to us to get youth involved. I work with beef and dairy farmers, not just in this county, of course, but uh, throughout the state. Um, but you know, locally, our crops are looking good. I hope the corn finishes. I'd like to get some more heat.
Prices go up?
Yeah. But uh, compared to some other areas of state, we, we've had uh, good weather. Um, we have our, our uh, West Branch Feeder Calf Sale on September, or October the twenty-fourth. Believe that is Tuesday, October twenty-fourth. It's Tuesday. If, if I'm wrong on the date, it is Tuesday, but it's right in that timeline. Um, the interesting thing is that, that right at that same time, and I'm gonna skip one day of the conference. So there's a PFOS conference in agriculture down campus. PFOS is uh, we call the forever, forever, forever chemicals. Um, and agriculture is um, is certainly impacted by it. Uh, this is a, a national issue. Um, in fact, the conference at Michigan State is a joint conference with University of Maine. Uh, because Maine has had certainly some problems with it as well too. And um, and we're not far from uh, the problem with the um, the air base at Ascot that has PFOS issue and uh, uh, waste from that has been dumped on, has been applied to, to farms. So I will be taking part in the first day of that conference, uh, which is the day before the West Branch Feeder Calf Sale, the second day of the conference. I'll skip for the, for the Feeder Calf Sale. We just wanted to look at that because I think it's a major issue that many of our, our legislators are, are involved in um, and concerned about. And then speaking of legislators, um, uh, I think maybe the MTA meeting, Congressman Jack Burman was, was down for that. I met his staff, uh, member, state staff member. Lauren Polly invited her to a tour um, on some farms that we just took last week over in Musawki County. And uh, one of the issues that came up that she was very interested in was uh, the issue of uh, immigrant labor and legality of immigrant labor. And uh, that was an issue that, that she really uh, hurt her ears up at and was going to take back to the congressman. I'll just say that, that it's a um, it's an annual statewide issue, it's a nationwide issue in agriculture that um, that, that we um, we have an issue with.
Thank you.
Not saying too much, right? But anyway, um, it, it's um, it's great to be with you today and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, is your EDC also?
I, I, I could also say some things about the EDC. So um, hi, my name is Phil Durs. I am the president of the County EDC Board. Um, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today.
Go ahead.
Doing that very well.
Um, so just uh, Monday, and, and by the way, I acknowledge Charles is, is of course a, a board member. And we appreciate his, his presence on the board. Just Monday, we um, uh, met in Rose Township. Uh, we quarterly, we plan to take the EDC meeting on the, on the road because meeting in township. With township uh, people in township offices. So Monday, we are Rose Township in Lupton and uh, the uh, Rose Township Board met. We had the opportunity to talk to them about what the EDC does and how competitive their citizens, uh, residents of, of their township. And uh, to understand better, uh, of course, their township and, and um, the opportunities that might be there. Uh, also I want to mention some workshops coming up that uh, Charles is leading the effort on. We have two uh, educational workshops come up on October the fifth, October the twelfth. The fifth is on using social media effectively for business. Uh, these are free workshops. And um, we uh, look forward to, to people learning how to apply this information to their businesses and to, to use it to benefit them. Um, the workshops are six to eight P M at Michigan Works Office. So October fifth is using social media effectively. October twelfth is collaboration between businesses for mutual benefit. And so again, we're looking to ask, um, you know, present information and have people share experiences that will be beneficial. And then finally, on October the nineteenth, a week following that, well, and seven is nineteen, yes. So I almost had to get my calculator off the oven. Um, we will have our economic outlook breakfast. That uh, begins at seven thirty in the morning at Forwards Conference Center and you're all invited to that. Um, we're looking forward to a great opportunity to discuss business and um, have a, uh, Mike Nunnely in from um, the uh, small business development center and to, to be able to, to network and, and, and share information.
Thank you.
Any else?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
How are you advertising these trainings?
Um, good question. Uh, Craig, we have a flyer. Also, we're using our um, social media. Um, our website, our Facebook page, and our LinkedIn account.
And just to add to that too, that, that flyer was sent to all the townships. We asked the townships to also spread the word.
And we'll probably be doing some email contact to businesses. That's a list that we, you know, keep working to grow is our email list. It's always a struggle is to have more people on our email list, but yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, elected officials, department heads on the phone.
Uh, Jeff, that's his office. No, I do not have anything today. Thank you.
Tom?
All good here, working on the uh, prosecuting attorney's office software conversion. Other than that, fairly routine.
Any other department heads or elected officials on the phone that I may have missed? Uh, item thirteen, managers on the floor.
Uh, the only thing on my iPad, the personal manner manuals here, is that updated now? We, no, that's um, just for reference for later discussion. Oh, okay, okay.
Item fourteen, motions for adoption, commissioners. Item fifteen, commissioners reports, Commissioner Simmons.
Um, well, my main focus has been on the budget, of course, so I, I did not bring all my notes for other, for the meetings I've been to, so. But we're in township, moving right along with the um, uh, their county being reassessed and it's going well. And they redid the parking lot with, with uh, some of their funds. And that looks very nice because it was in dire straits. And the other half is still in dire straits, but they'll get to it, um, on availability of funds. So that's about, about all I have. Edward Township, uh, there's a there is a, um, a business with um, it's an apple orchard and I was absolutely surprised about this apple orchard. Um, he has ten thousand apple trees. It was amazing. And um, I did not know that. And he does businesses with other businesses. So I just, I did, even though I've been going to the meeting, I didn't realize and I go by his place all the time and never realized there was ten thousand trees there. So um, yeah, it's amazing. What, what goes on in this county and some you don't even know about it. That's about all I have.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Nothing.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Uh, RHP, you guys have been here. We talked about that four hour housing partnership uh, into this month. We'll be submitting that uh, uh, basically what we've all put together uh, into the state. And then from there, we'll be waiting to hear back what our Lebanon County area is going to receive and uh, me and Penny Pay, you know, with uh, Michigan Works and the EDC, she's very involved with that. And we're just gonna stay steady and consistent uh, to be able to keep moving forward with that and hopefully bring some of that to Ogumah County with time. Um, EDC, basically Phil answered all that. Um, I really think if you guys can pencil that in the morning of the nineteenth at Forwards, you guys will get a free breakfast and really see some, some real good things that the EDC is doing. So we can get a real good.
That's October, yes.
That's October nineteenth, yep, seven thirty in the morning. Um, Mills Township had a meeting the other night. Um, there's been times in the past where recreation, recreational marijuana has been brought to the table and they've denied it. Uh, we had a group of people that came in. They had a very good presentation, business plan, uh, their local business owners in the township. And the township approved their first recreational marijuana facility. Uh, which will be going uh, right behind the smoke shop across from the hardware, hardware store. Um, and that will uh, generate some significant money for the state. So basically what happens is there's obviously a ton of these recreational marijuana facilities throughout the state. But what they do is for their total sales, ten percent of the total sales of every single recreational marijuana facility in the state, ten percent of sales goes into a pot. At the end of the year, that pot is split up with every single township municipality that one of these um, one of these locations are a part of. So just for example, if we were to have one in Mills Township last year, from the information I was told the other night, almost fifty thousand dollars would have been um, written basically a check to the county. Tim, is that correct?
Uh, some of our counties have uh, received very lucrative amounts.
And that's, and that's every single year. And obviously it goes up and down with the amount of facilities and the sales. But um, you know, that, that is a decent chunk of money. So uh, along, do you have a question on that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Um, does that money go to the townships or does that money come to the counties?
I'm not exactly sure how it's distributed, but I, I know that some counties municipalities have received it too.
I think it's, I think it's a split, but the county alone last year, the counties that had, had on average per facility, that's per facility, fifty-two thousand dollars. And then there's a part uh, additional funds that go to the township.
Township, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the townships were responsible. They, they, they were approved, the approving authorities. So I was wondering if
Correct.
Just went to the township.
Right, okay, thanks. Um, another big item there is uh, the township board did approve uh, a new township facility there. Um, they went with uh, Lappam and Associates is gonna start uh, the groundwork for that. And that'll be located off of Rifle River Trail at um, Smarts Park. Uh, we have current construction of uh, uh, it's gonna be a very nice park right there on Skidway Lake. Uh, local contractors are doing all that work. Got a hiccup with Consumers Energy, a couple week delay on some poles that were supposed to get moved, but that is all moving forward. Um, uh, happy to report that uh, I hope we can continue to move forward with uh, you know, finding uh, a good resolution with the high banks. Um, I had asked Dan, Dan Johnson, who was a local resident of Mills Township, that if he would be willing to join the board. He went to the meeting on Wednesday. Sounds like the board has approved Dan Johnson. Uh, Dan's a, a local resident, um, cares a lot about our community. Smart man, I think he'd be a great addition. Plus, I really think that we'll work hard at putting this five oh one C three together. So there's no, no cost to the county. We'll get, you know, a good group of businesses in the area, some, some smart dedicated people in the area to be part of this five oh one C three, just like they have at the Deer Park. So it'll be all self-funded. So we will work, continue to work hard on that for the high banks. Um, CERT, uh, there's a CERT emergency management for us. CERT, uh, you guys know I'm a member of. There was a meeting last night. We've got some new members again. Our CERT program is really going strong. Um, and that is a good deal for us in case we ever do have some type of real emergency that they're needed. Um, DHS, DH, HS meetings, uh, had that the other day. Uh, cases are down from the summer, which is a good thing. Uh, we've got some really good, strong, smart people there helping out a lot of our residents of the county. Um, and that's, that's all I have for today.
Commissioner Scott?
Um, the only real meeting I've attended uh, is the uh, Parks and Rec yesterday. And as Commissioner uh, Wiltie said, um, uh, Mr. Johnson did come. We talked with him. He, he, he liked to join. So if we could back up maybe one, one point on the agenda and I'd like to make an emotion to, to have the board uh, uh, pass that he is a member if we could. Can we do that?
Short answer is yes, you could do that. Uh, we did receive his application through the uh, seamless docs yesterday. And I would suggest that you just wait. We'll have it on the committee, the whole meeting next week. You can look over the application if you have any questions and then move it forward at the next regular meeting.
Okay, but it was unanimous uh, with the uh, uh, everybody in attendance. Everybody that wasn't attended, just one was not. Um, I, we uh, we put an RFP out a couple of months ago for a roof on the, on the uh, hall at uh, Nature Park. Nothing was received. Uh, so we went out uh, on a personal mission. We do have a, a quote. I was gonna bring it up in the next committee as a whole, so that we could talk about it. Um, uh, Mr. Simmons was there uh, because he won the, the bid for the well, the new well. He explained reporting processes and things like that and types of wells. Uh, we'll still go ahead with the well. It may be in the spring, but it's uh, it's uh, it's a goal. Um, other than that, uh, I have not been able to get to a township or a city meeting with uh, other things going, so. So, that's all I have right now.
Um, I attended Michigan Works. Uh, they're looking forward this, the last Friday in September is their career cross at Saginaw Valley State University. That's for high school students. Um, that's a very, very large event. They ran out the Rider Center. Um, numerous different uh, agencies um, are there for high school students to see the various careers. Um, our Michigan Works meeting is gonna be held there, so we will be attending as well. Um, it's a, it's a very, very large um, event. I will fill you in. Uh, I did not attend last year, but I am going this year. So I look forward to seeing um, this event. Logan Township Hall, I did uh, I did attend that meeting. They did some renovations to their hall. Um, they painted, they painted it. They completed the bathrooms um, with some of their ERPA funds. Uh, he'll still having some, some uh, issues over there in Logan, but same things seem to be improving. Um, talked about the trash opt-in as far as uh, I just actually received my letter in the mail yesterday. If I, since I'm a Logan Township resident, if I want to opt in with their uh, trash pickup, um, still discussing some attorney fees. Um, what it, what else over there? That's pretty much it about over there. Uh, opiate, we have a meeting tonight. I attended the last meeting. Um, tonight's because it sounds like it's gonna be the needs assessment results or information on the needs assessment for Ogumah County. I did not attend um, any of my other three because they were the same evenings as our budget uh, meeting. So that's really it for me. Anything else, commissioners? Anybody forget anything? Uh, item sixteen, general public comment. Is there any general public comment in the room? Come on up, sir.
You again.
Back again.
My name is Phil Durs with MSU Extension. I'd like to introduce to you um, our new four H program coordinator, Stephanie Stevens. And have Stephanie say a few words to you, if you were to.
Hi. I was born and raised in this community and I went to college and I came back. And I'm happy to be here and I'm excited to see what I can do for each.
Thank you. I think you started like the week of the fairs. You got thrown right into everything.
Yes, I did, I did. So I've been kind of meeting all the volunteers. We just had a livestock meeting last night and that went really well. So, excited to be here.
Good, thank you. Is that a full-time position?
Yes.
Good. Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
No, I forgot to plug in my freezer.
Thank you.
We're talking about meat.
Any other public comment in the room?
Thank you.
Any public comment on the phone? Uh, we're gonna go back to the item ninety. Uh, there may be, there may be some business after the closed session. So just to inform everybody, there may be uh, a form of vote.
We need a resolution, but we need a motion to go into.
This is uh, correct. I'm getting there.
Okay.
This is the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Claim number two one nine seven one three for closed session. Can someone entertain a motion?
A motion that we go into closed session, deal with this uh, unemployment matter.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, with support from Commissioner Wiltie. We are going to go into closed session at ten twenty-nine.
Could I have you read the motion as it's written in uh?
I have it. Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, I don't have it.
I have it. Uh, Pursue to MCL fifteen dot two six eight, move in, move to enter into a closed session to consult, consult with the county attorneys regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with department, Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Claim number two one nine seven one three. An open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the Board of Commissioners. You need a roll call vote for that. Correct.
I go into.
Closed session, yes.
I go into closed session, yes. Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. Frank Scott. Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Tom?
I'll put people in the waiting room right now.
Okay, let us know when you're.
Next time.
When you're good, Tom?
Do you guys feel secure in this room? I just like that hall, I don't know. I don't know.
I know there's the bath, there's the bathroom down there.
Yeah, close this curtain if you'd like.
We have to try to do some. He's still putting people in the waiting room, so we'll tell you guys.
Over by the bathrooms, Tim, does that go into an office to the back left there, or is that just our?
I think it goes into uh, nine one one. That hallway.
No, that's this way. Everybody back? We need a motion to go back into open session.
I'll make a motion to go back into.
Second.
We have a motion, there will be support from Commissioner Simmons to go back into session. We need a roll call for that, too, correct?
Uh, sure, Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn. Motion with support to adjourn the meeting at, I don't have.
Ten forty.
Ten forty-six. All in favor, say yes.
Yeah, yes.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks for coming, guys.
Yeah, everyone.